All right, it is 5:15 on November 7th, 2023. Call the meeting to order. Jane, will you do a roll call, please?
Rudolph?
Here.
Shabin?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Beelenberg?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Lindberg?
Here.
Thank you.
We've all been given the agenda. We'll ask for a motion. Agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Peterson.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabin?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
And here's the state any conflicts if you have at this time or along the way if they pop into your head and you forgot about them, so. We will move on to the consent agenda. These are all under one motion, one vote. The minutes of the October 17th, 2023 council meeting. Claims list number 1301, the amount of $101,927,55 cents. Everybody saw some of those larger amounts? Any questions about any of those? And then the renewal application for Montz Inc., DBA Purple Door Class C Retail Alcohol License.
Thank you.
So a motion to through the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Beelenberg.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabin?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Under Other Business, we have Resolution Number 2547. Accept and approve the fiscal year 2223 Annual Financial Report. Some light reading?
This report is due to the state every year. It's our annual financial report, which looks back at what took place in fiscal year that we closed out. So this is a reporting of all the revenues, expenses, and debts that we that occurred. So this is due to the state. It's also published in the newspaper, so. Does anybody have any questions on it? Any?
A lot of numbers there.
Yeah.
It's like a D-Grade series for like 30 for 30, like a replay on ESPN of what happened in the past.
Right?
Well, just over three seconds.
Two or three series on the AFR.
Hearing, no questions. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2547?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Rudolph, if everyone from far, far away, so.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabin?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Review the three flood insurance policies. Jane, you want to give us a little bit of input on that?
Most certainly. In the past six weeks, we've had a couple flood. We have three flood insurance policies that the city maintains. And instead of bringing this to the Insurance Committee, wanted to bring it to full council. And we do maintain three flood insurance policies. And two of them renewed December 1st, and the other is in June. And when those were coming for renewal and taking a look and a more critical look and lens, started questioning, why are we maintaining these? And spoken with Brent, our insurance agent, spoken with Todd Pennston from Brookfield, and Kim, our engineer. And the three areas are out at the main wastewater plant, where there's a 500-year levy that was constructed after the 93 floods. There is down by the street garage, which on a flood map is not even in the flood zone yet because that would have been taken out after the 93 floods and the mitigation with the levy down by the water plant. And then there's a portion of Rantown Lift Station down by the Dog Pound. Say a portion because it's not all in the flood. So through a series of kind of evaluations, discussions, our recommendation is to, when these come up for renewal, to not renew these. And as we think the risk is either very limited or nonexistent. Give you an example at the wastewater plant. If there was a 16-inch rain that came and was in the on the inside of the levy, we have pumps out there, and we'd be pumping that back over the 500-year levy. Another item to consider, which we discussed, was a lot of the equipment, at least from a wastewater side, is designed to be wet. And then lastly, with at least the in-town lift station, with some other mitigation activities that were done. And Steve Kinko was still here with putting in some underground tubing and then having some swale put down between the new water plant and the wastewater plant to run to the south. But our recommendation is to not renew these. We wanted that to be in front of council. And I'd be happy to address any questions, or Brent, if you'd like to comment on any of that. And we include those policies in your packet. So.
You have any questions for?
Had we had all three of these for a while?
For a while.
A long, long time. Some of them probably they pre-led, like even building the levies. Some of them, you know, we found out they were in the zones, they've been on those 15, 20 years, but through discussion again, it was, hey, just because the building's there, does that mean there's a policy on it? And we even started trying to figure out ways to get feedback of, okay, they're going to ask what could happen. You know, and it was really like, the 500-year, you know, flood levy fails, or a gate failed, if anything. We went back to talking with, can't say it, Tim in my head, that even if, as Jane mentioned, even if it is, you can pump it out. A lot of it's designed to be underwater. It's not like City Hall is sitting down in the flood zone, or HMU's office building is sitting down there. If we got water in, it would cause substantial damage. Most of the properties are designed to be underwater anyway.
We had also brought into the discussion that in extraordinary significant event of the magnitude that say, okay, you're
The diet failed.
That theme is, I mean, an event like that, theme is going to be involved anyway.
Correct.
Or likely there's some other federal in terms of providing other aid and support.
Most of our expensive equipment is mobile, all the vehicles and everything else, they can be moved pretty easily.
Yep, from the street garage, because we had an anomaly event back in 2019, if you remember that March, that March flood with this thawing ice and those stuff actually coming from in-town. And just to prevent the measures, things were kind of gathering, and you still didn't have any water, was we just relocated that equipment up to the Vats parking lot. And at the same time, we also had pumps that pumped over back over the levy, so. That's our recommendation after your staff and
I don't know what is going on here.
Agents and stuff have looked at that. And also coming into, as always, be mindful of, you know, our public expenses, and also, you know, we're going to come into an uncertain, uncertain and, I'd say conservative budget year. This uncertainty for next four or five years. So.
I would agree.
Risk and financial savings, about $5,000 a premium, we felt is a prudent recommendation.
Jane, is there a motion to approve that recommendation to not renew those?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Shabin?
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabin?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next would be to review the agreement between the City of Harlan and Windstream.
Sorry, I didn't miss Gary.
This relates to over two years ago, having Windstream, the objective was having any facilities or wires from Windstream as a franchisee of getting them off the city and HMU-owned poles. And through lack of non-compliance, we filed an injunction fraction, worked with our attorney, and with the attempt to get their attention. It's taken approximately two years. I've given you a few updates over time. And with the great work with Joe and his team, they are in compliance. And to reach settlement, this isn't a criminal nature. There's been staff time, administrative time, and the settlement is recommended at $500, and they pay all court costs. I've been consulting our attorney and others, I think that, you know, that we know we have a lot more staff and administration time into it, yet to ask for more, likely would not receive that, is my understanding. So I've also reached out and got some other perspectives as well. And so that's what's in front of you. And to get this put to bed, and they're in compliance, I have them pay the penalty, and all the court costs. And any time you want to add or questions you have on this one?
About time.
Doesn't look like it.
And pass off to Joe and his team for just going out back. Pole number 86 still has one facility.
So all the poles empty then, Joe?
Yes, I think the last couple you verified.
Yes.
Then you guys go back through and take those down?
Yeah, hopefully it'll get done here this fall.
And that's the overall objective here, was to get them out, so with the eventual removal of those poles. That's what the intended pole was.
All right, this is for a motion to approve this.
Second.
Motion by Shabin, second by, is that Peterson?
Yep.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabin?
Thank you.
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
I apologize for this conversation. I probably will abstain from that vote, if I could, for the fact of missing the conversation piece. I apologize.
We'd rather have you breathe, right?
Yeah. I don't know if the air is dry or what, sorry. I apologize for causing people Well, everybody looks at you too this day, and he's like
He's hoping he gets four more years.
I know it.
All right, next up, review the dream playground naming.
I'll be happy to at least initially address this. Connie Clausen is here. Connie has been one of many team members, committee members, working on the Dream Playground Reimagine project. So she is here to address any questions as well. Tim Miller, our Parks Superintendent, who has been a valid team member and champion of helping support this as well. But this topic is before you for the reason of it's public space. This is specific to the opportunity with a lead gift, which Connie can speak to. A lead gift that will provide an opportunity for naming of the playground. It's not for Pioneer Park, it's not the park as a whole. This is for the playground, which is known as Dream Playground. And since it deals with public space, it should come before the governing body before providing an opportunity to be named, have an opportunity for naming because of a lead gift or a large gift. In looking back, as well as in present, with intent, I've learned, and with intent now, we don't have an ironclad 15-page naming and donation, naming policy. There's a few larger communities that do. And consulting with some other peers and communities such as ours and some other peer administrators, it's been recommended that we keep a flexible approach to this, because each situation may be different. And so here in this case, it's a unique opportunity. And which would provide, with your approval, provide naming with a lead gift on the donation side. And Connie, if you wouldn't mind highlighting at least what that gift looks like, and what some of the requests are of the large gift, and just for the camera, who's behind me stepping up here? Okay, well, I guess you'd have to check with the mayor on that, then.
I came from hanging Christmas lights. That's okay. So yes, I was actually approached by a family individual requesting that they had naming rights after a $250,000 donation. That's rather substantial. And yes, we would obviously welcome others. There would be more opportunity for naming another area, or a piece of equipment, or something, should another substantial donation come towards us. That would be fabulous. I actually spoke to the family this afternoon, reminding them that the city council meeting was tonight. And we had discussion on what it actually would be named if approved. And it's very simple. It would be Grandma or Grandma Bee's Dream Playground. I was given the okay to share that.
And my understanding is some of that, they wouldn't want to remain, I mean, pending this, as well as with the committee and that family, how to announce that, and also build other, I guess, other support off of that.
Well, yes, they actually would prefer to remain anonymous at this time. I mean, obviously, at some point, because they want a piece of memorabilia, just a nice stain regarding the actual individual that this is going to be named after, will be displayed there. So clearly, it will eventually come out, but at this time, they would prefer to remain anonymous. The funds will be paid out over a three-year period. They were actually going to be visiting with their tax preparer this week. So I hope to get more information on that. Obviously, in this day and age, we know that there's a chance that someone, well, any of us, none of us, are guaranteed it tomorrow. So that will be discussed too, again, if this is approved. Any other questions?
What I would offer in terms of the motion, it should be as specific enough to include, you know, upon receipt or a letter secured for the funds of $250,000. And secondly, that's, and as Connie's alluded to, which she's given a bit more on the name, that that's a mutual agreement. And it's been the understanding that since this has come forth, is that Dream Playground will stay in the name? Yet just once we get to a final name, it sounds like he's getting closer, that that just has a mutual agreement with the city as well, so.
Can I ask?
And it's exciting time with what this does for the project.
Can I ask, does the family, does the family live in Harlan? Actually, yes. Okay. And they have been very receptive to other functions monetarily, as well as physically, but have remained behind the scenes. So again, this is kind of the root there, and I'm in. Okay, thank you.
I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah.
I think it's amazing.
Absolutely.
It's hard to pass up on a local
Yeah, they're, it sounds like they're local, they're involved in other things, and they want to get back to community, and if you put a little plaque up with a nice little scene and a name on there, I think that's amazing.
Okay, somebody will make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Beelenberg, second by Lindberg, with, I guess the motion would be what Jane stated, as far as
I would, again, recommend is
Agreement on payment.
Upon receipt of, or some security of this 250 plus, a final mutual agreement.
Okay.
Make that motion.
Still second that with all the legal jargon.
Okay, motion by Beelenberg, second by Lindberg.
Okay, Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabin?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
With the legal jumbo.
Thanks for your work on that, Connie.
Yeah, thank you. Just out of curiosity, do we know roughly where we sit at on the actual fundraising aspect of it?
300 something with that.
350.
So, yeah, so I was just looking at that earlier today, and there's been an active team, a committee, there are a few park and rec board members, as well as a committee of non-park and rec members that are on the Dream Playground Committee that have been diligently working, and this is starting to take a definite uptick. So between some smaller grants, plus donations to date, and pledges, and then with this, we'll be just close to $375,000, which would be just about 25% of the overall project. And approximate ratio looking towards 60% private dollars and 40% of grants. There's a subcommittee within this group that's working on the grant side of it. And most of those grants are last money in. I was just on the phone with one of those groups this afternoon. But that's an update, is we're
Appreciate it.
Getting close to 400,000, and then with this lead gift, we, I know the committee and others, we see this as a launching pad to go out and have some more targeted discussions with some other potential lead donors with recognition on the entrance wall. For the entrance towers versus more to come on that, but again, hats off to the great committee that's
Yes, thank you very much for that information, Connie.
Next up would be the city administrators' report. Mr. Geddes. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Not a lot tonight, a couple of updates. Some staff activities. The parks has been, Tim and the team, they've been busy with finally got the spring finalized, and equipments ready for winter. All the restrooms and fountains and water drinking fountains are all winterized. Street Department continues very active with ashtrays grinding stumps. Weather's holding up really nice. Seen the street sweeper out and about, so this cool weather spell, a little bit of moisture, had a lot of leaves falling, so street sweeper has been out, and then there I know at some point the white stuff will happen, and so the plow blades are out, and they were getting trucks ready. Over the past few weeks, we're collaborating with a number of teams with HMU in identifying a water source at the 10th and Court areas. And through just, you know, collaborative effort, working with some homeowners, and Joe and the team did eventually identify that, as Joe alluded to, with service line. And that area appears to be corrected, but that took a joint effort and some staff time to get that trouble shot. The HomeServe Service Warranty Line Program. We had a kickoff meeting with them, staff did. And estimate of time is that the first solicitation or mailing out to homeowners would be after the first of the year, so stay tuned on that. We did have a kickoff call. And waiting next steps from them. In the past few weeks, we had been contacted by what's called CGI Community Videos, and behind this, I shouldn't say, this was developed back in 2014, I think was the first version, 2014, 15. So we have a community welcome video, and CGI is the organization that has provided this. We had a renewal in 2019 of this, and it's up for renewal again, and they're three to four year, it's a three-year agreement, and we've kind of delayed the renewal of it each time. But to paint a picture of what it is, it's off of our Welcome to Harlan, it's always been off our previous website, other sites linked to this. And they've created this video content, and there's five sections of it. Economic Development, Education, Quality of Life, Healthcare, and incredible welcome from the mayor.
Welcome to Harlan Island.
So
I'm Jay Christensen, mayor of this incredible community.
So each of those sections provides this, and if anyone looking to relocate to Harlan, this gets a lot of attention. So it's time for renewal. There's no cost to the city for this, because nor any of these entities, because how this is funded is CGI then goes out, and so you see these sponsoring organizations that are around the main page. They'll then be contacted, again, the nonprofits and businesses, where they'd like to be a sponsor on this page, that they could then either have a link to their website, or this company will also create content for them for a fee. So that's how the program has worked for the last, the first introduction, the renewal. This would be a second renewal. Spoken with mayor, and also spoken with Todd's office, the school, and the hospital, and they would all be in support of this renewal. Plan, this is more information, it doesn't require your, there's no cost to it. We'll plan to renew it, and by next spring, we'll have an updated shoot date and new scripting. But also a good opportunity to highlight this welcome video as well, and the videos that are out there, from a great PR and a great recruitment tool as well. Any comments that others, or questions you have on that?
Probably throw the mayor pro tem in there, have her say a couple things.
And they had come out and, since this, you know, Jay took office, and you know, part of the agreement was that they came out and shot some new video. Since the last renewal, just had this update, and that was no cost to us as well.
The mayor sends a fine message.
Pairs them, a very fine welcome message. And the last two items I have. Just encourage everyone with the remaining time today, I know this isn't going to be broadcast yet, but you know, today is voting day, and hopefully we've got an opportunity to exercise the vote. If not, polls are open until 8:00 PM. And we know there's a couple of contested races, as well as a very important EMS vote, so. And then the last item I have is this was released from the Department of Revenue, 1st of November. And we've alluded to, I've alluded to, Jane, we're well aware of this, coming into a, again, conservative budgeting season, and uncertain what that future holds because of some legislative changes. This was just released by the Department of Revenue, and this was one of the things that the legislators were alluding to, is adjusting the rollback. So I highlighted, and this is on the residential property tax class rollback, and they have dropped that 8%. So think of rollback in the property tax calculation as an equalization measure. And in the past six years, that rollback run around 54 to 56%. Last year was just over 54%. It's dropping down to 46%. So that's an 8% drop. You're rolling back from your assessed value, and this isn't meant to be a short property tax training session. We'll get more into this, but this was alluded to, that this was likely coming. And it's Department of Revenue came through, and that's what it's being set up. So the last comment I'll make is, even though assessed valuations of the assessor went up 25, 35, 40%, well, already eight, another 8% is coming, 8% is coming off of that to try to equalize. So we'll get more into detail on this with our budget sessions, but if you haven't seen that, this was released by the Department of Revenue, and we'll wait by December 31st to get the property tax valuations from the assessor, which will be, as I've alluded to, or we've alluded to, one of the other key numbers in the what our number, what our revenues could look like or not look like. We don't know what that is yet. And in closing, the mayor possibly will run to leave to this, yet we lost a dear community member last week. Joe Zucconi. Joe was a member of our Green Playground Fundraising and Planning Committee. Joe's been involved in this community for decades, and a tremendous loss. Being felt, I know, by many in the community, friends, and certainly extend condolences to his family and everyone impacted, so. And his services and such are tomorrow, or the, tomorrow, Thursday. That's all I have there.
He was definitely one of those guys behind the scenes, but he was always behind the scenes, doing lots of things in our community, so. I would echo that. Anything, thing for Jane, questions about his report? I would echo that. Anything thing for Gene, questions about his report? Thanks, Gene. Moving on to my report, it's not on the, on the sheet, but the first I would start off with is the to drive downtown tonight would be a great night. Drive around the square. There's, it's a lot of sparkling things down there as of Sunday morning, afternoon. Give kudos to Sharon and Kevin Lukey and Barry and Donna Dool. Those, those people are behind the scenes organizing this. And Todd Lee was there, Joe Ruescher was there. I showed up, you know, there were lots of folks that just showed up. And then Barry was on the phone tree. I don't know how everybody got lined up, but the people that you knew, some people you didn't know. And very well attended by people to help. They organized it, went very smoothly and it looks pretty darn nice down there now. I've just noticed even after Sunday night, lots of slow-moving cars downtown driving around the square and people already knew about it, so. I know it's not Christmas time yet, but the weather was nice and it was a nice day to be out there doing what we were doing, so. Yeah, it wasn't frozen ground yet we were pounding into, so. But I know a lot of that took a lot of organization beforehand. They were checking lights at Storm down at HMU. They were going through and making sure that the ones they brought up that were going to work, but I did notice Sharon did say, hey, plug those in, make sure they light up because we were not, because a lot of those things are pretty involved as far as it's not just destroying the lights. There's other things going on down there, but they did a nice job and it looks very nice, so. So kudos to those guys. Barry did state, being 79 years old, he doesn't think he wants to do it one more year, so anyone out there would like to help out and train under Barry Dool, let him know, let me know, let Sharon know. Because he's done a really nice job over the years, so. Then I would move on to the official. What I have on here is to appoint Mike Moss to the HMU Utilities Board Trust, Board of Trustees for a six-year term, filling Dave Terrell's spot, which is end of this month, right, Joe? Is it end of November?
Yes, he has done the 21st.
Twenty-first. So Mike, his would expire, be six years, November 21 of 2029. So Mike reached out to him. He's reached out, talked a little bit with Joe, see, Mike's the, been in our community for quite some time. Variety, I know with where he works, there's a reputation that they might get moved once in a while, but he's indicated he would love to stick around here and raise his family where he's at right now, which is pretty, pretty nice. Good guy, so. My recommendation would be to put Mike Moss on the HMU Board of Trustees.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Too slow.
Be a gentleman, mature. Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson, sorry.
Keep present.
Time, it's time delayed, isn't it?
She should get like 10 seconds.
Yeah, yeah, she within 10 seconds, she gets it.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven? Kroger?
Aye.
Bealberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye. I did read that, and I do know why I couldn't...
Thanks for Dave's. I think that's two terms. That's 12 years for Dave.
Yeah, he's done a nice job.
He's been chairman quite a few too. I mean, with Randy Leven, he jumped into that seat because Michelle, you know, was ready to move in, so he took chairman two years in a row there and he's had it other times, and so.
Yeah, he's done a very nice job.
Michael do an excellent job as well.
Moving on to Shelby County Chamber of Commerce Industry, Todd Belene.
Well, good evening, everyone.
You, Todd.
Since the last time we, we got together, we've got a couple of events downtown. We had the Harvest Fest. And then we also had the Garden Artists past weekend. We want to thank all of the sponsors that helped with those, all, again, all the volunteers that helped with that. None of these things could go off without all of their support and help. And like to thank the community for, for showing up for the events. I mean, when we had Harvest Fest, it was a balmy 32 degrees with a nice little wind coming out of the north. But yet we still cooked 350 hot dogs, so, you know. They told me the kids in Harvard come out, they don't care how cold it is, and they were right. They, they came out and it was a great event. And this past weekend, just a lot of beautiful art pieces all around the square and they had Rusty Wop tied to it, so it went off really well. This week, just a reminder, we've got a lot of Veterans Day activities that will take place. Right now, you can go down to the American Legion Post between 10:00 and 1:00 and they're selling American flags if you need to replace your flag. This Friday, there'll be two programs at the school. At 10:00 AM, it'll be at the high school, they'll have their veterans program. And then at 1:30 at the elementary school, they'll have their veterans program. So if you get a chance to attend any of those. And then finally, on Sunday, November 12th, from 7:00 to noon, at Veterans Memorial, we'll be having the Honoring Our Veterans Breakfast. And it's just a free will donation for breakfast down there. And then finally, just announced today, West Central Community Actions Adopt a Family Program is starting up for 2023. In 2022, they served 86 families that consisted of 221 individuals. So if you'd like to adopt a family for the holiday season this year, give them a call at 712-755-5602. And they'll answer any questions you have and get you set up.
Will they print that in the paper too, as usual?
It'll be come out in the paper. I just, we saw it out on social media, like late mornings, early afternoon. So wanted to make sure that we made people aware that that program's starting up. So that, that's kind of the report from the chamber for tonight, so.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Harlan Municipal Utilities, Joe Ruescher.
Drill our one.
Joe?
Few updates here. As far as our well project, raw water project, still going along well. Second well was drilled last week. They got that finished up, got the screen encasing in, and that was all set. Just got to do a pump test on that second well. First well pumped well, I think I talked about that, you know, that should be a good producer. But we'll find out on the second one, I guess, by the drilling log, this, the second one also should be a good well. And they started, got set up and started drilling on the third one today. And that'll finish up the three in the south well field. And I think I'd mentioned the fourth well that's going to be in our east well field there. We're looking at converting that to a deep well just to give us some security with the dry weather, try to get into another aquifer. So we'll be progressing there. Looks like we're going to be doing a test well probably in December. Just to see if the formation's there for a deeper well. And then if that's the case, we would go ahead and do design for a deep well there as far as the east well field. McCarthy completed their last major tie-in today on Utility Avenue. Utility Avenue's blocked off there. Up the most of this week until they kind of get all that piping taken care of and then get that road back and shake it in the backfield. So if people are heading down to the dump site there, going to have to go kind of around to Jacobson Industrial Avenue to get back around there. So you can't get there from Highway 44, Chapel at this point. Just wanted to give an update here too on the service line surveys. I'd like to, there again, ask the, our customers to try to complete that survey. Just go in on our website under Public Notices, I believe, is where that's at, find that survey, complete it on your own. Otherwise, we have started, started last Wednesday with one of our employees going house to house. And that employee would be working from like 11:00 to 8:00. That way we can catch some during the day and then try to catch the people after hours or after work at home. Last Wednesday, I think it worked pretty well, so tomorrow will be the second, second timeout on that, you know, try to get around, so. And like I said, I think we do have some of the customers that are starting to do that on their own also, so. Hopefully word gets around that we're coming around, that, you know, more people will try to complete their own too. Ahead of us trying to have the, Bill Beach home. And that's all I have. Oh, I knew that one, I guess, sorry. We talked about our modifications to our natural gas town border station. I didn't even mention that last, last meeting. The board did approve to go ahead with those modifications to get us in position for an open season to potentially get more capacity for our natural gas. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from the up here?
I apologize.
That time of year.
Well, just, yeah, I got... Took a, took a my throat.
Just if you see a veteran, be sure to thank them for their service.
Freedom is a free.
Okay, so now we will, not going to ask for a motion yet, but we want to get ready for entering the closed session. Anybody want to maybe take a restroom break? I guess the room can be...
Cleared.
Cleared and we'll move into closed session here. Once we come back, after about five minutes or so, we'll go into closed session.